Six, a little after six, we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, John's gone tonight, Chelsea's gone tonight, so it's just the three of us this evening. Up here. Okay, the regular agenda to approve, we've got a couple add-ons or...
We do have an addition of Lane's Club temporary alcohol permit before their event on Friday.
Can I have an addition? I'd like a, just an update on the Black Mountain implementation and how we're going along with the items from the auditorium, how we're addressing those, update on that if you can.
Okay, so where do you want to put those, Brent? Want to put those after you or before?
I just put them before fourteen.
Yeah, okay.
That probably be...
Motion to approve the agenda with set changes.
Got a motion on the floor, Dave makes a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, we'll go with the agenda this evening. You guys get a chance to go through the minutes.
Briefly?
No, I'm sorry, we have the consent agenda, I apologize. I know, we'll get back on order. Okay. If they answer anything on there that we need to concern ourselves with, other than everything else, me, I'm all right.
Just the notes that I had.
Yep, just the notes you got in there, okay.
Just a question, how often do we get a review of our insurance from our insurer?
For, for our assets or what?
Well, just, we have an annual insurance renewal of seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-four. My question is just how often do they come in and review it?
I've never put it out on bids.
You've never put it out on bids?
Nope, I've had this guy for years and...
Okay. Brent, you got anything, questions? Now entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Right, I'm a second, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, the consent agenda. Okay, meeting minutes from last time. Can I see anything on there?
It wasn't here.
Yeah. I didn't see anything on there.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, he's a second.
Second.
Okay, Dave is a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, next thing we got up here is public comments, anybody have anything they'd like to discuss tonight?
Can I talk a little bit later, I just got here. I want to hear some things before I make a discussion.
This is our public comment period.
Yeah, Dave, you gotta do it now, because I got enough stuff I gotta get through here tonight, so...
Okay, I have a couple comments, so...
You got two, you got two minutes, go. I can't, we got a lot of stuff I gotta get through tonight, so...
I stopped here a couple times before to talk about the horse happening, and I wanted to put some information into that.
Okay.
And I found out that it was already in the process of being pretty much done, and no one notified me that I wanted to put some information, so I talked to Brent, and he was going to probably put some of that information in on Friday, and did you do that, Brent?
We are working on doing an update on special assessments, what we discussed, so yes.
It'll be in the horse happening?
That's what, that's what we're putting in there.
Very good, because what I want to do is the special assessments, and I also thought, the last meeting I was here, it talked about the increasing of the, of the water costs per people, analyzing in a different way, along with the increase of the garbage, and I thought that would should be in the horse happening too, informing the people, like we all want, everybody wants inform, information. And I brought that up too, recommending that this would go out instead of getting it in the bill. That's only two things I have tonight, we'll talk about the special assessments and your development of your roundabout and how you're gonna assess that at a later date.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you, anybody else got anything? Go. Yes, please. Let's say, please introduce yourself.
Yep, I'm Tanya Abraham, and I live in the River Oaks Estates Division.
Okay.
And I did talk to Brent earlier today, and kind of going off what he just said, we, as a development, there were several of us in our development that were kind of upset with the latest investments on that whole sewer water thing, I think Brian knows all that. And we were upset with the lack of notification that we received, I understand it wasn't Fargo Forum, but there are a lot of people who do not get the Fargo Forum. And also, just, you know, the, the whole process of, you know, that he said, well, it was followed, the legal process was followed by making Fargo Forum, well, that may be, but I still think because people don't get the Fargo Forum, I think it would be nice if we could get a letter, like, I know Fargo is known for doing that, they, they send out a letter to residents saying you were looking at assessing you X amount of dollars for this project, the appeal process, if you want to go through it, is step number one, two, three, all that kind of thing. Found out today that we absolutely missed the boat on even a plot, on, on the appeal process, and and now it's basically done, there's nothing any of us can, can do about it. I think that, you know, we, as, as a lot of us in development, feel that it was just kind of, I don't want to say underhanded, but it was just kind of, it was just like, oh, they're gonna pay for it, and we're just gonna assess it to them, we're not gonna tell them anything about it. And then we get surprised by the increase on our bill, you know? I think if we could, and I know I talked to Brent today, he said that they're looking at doing an evaluation of how your appeal process is, and how you guys notify people as far as on the assessments and stuff, I mean, I would hope that it's handled better in the future, because now, like, we, we didn't even know that there was this, and then we missed the appeal process without even knowing that this stuff was assessed to us, so...
So, just as a point of reference, a lot of the information was posted on the website in addition to the form, so, again, I, I get it, people want a letter, and that, that's the overwhelming, still message that we've heard from a number of residents, that they want a letter pushed to their mailbox. And, and we're not, although we're not required to do that, we said, okay, we're gonna take on the additional cost to actually apply and send letters to residents, because that is an additional cost over and above the official notification that has to be done through this, you know?
Right, but we're paying that cost, we are the residents. You know, we're the residents being assessed the taxes.
But it's an additional cost that we don't plan for today.
But you know what, I guarantee people would be happy with that, just to know, because we don't get, we don't, a lot of people aren't on Facebook, a lot of people don't, you know, aren't friends with the system, they don't go check the website every couple days or whatever to see what's happened.
I understand.
You know, so I think that, you know, knowing that it's being looked at again, I would just encourage that, yeah, it be looked at, because I know there's a lot of upset people about it.
Looking at changing the policy for communication, on how these things, how the future projects are handled.
Okay.
What do you plan for changing the policy or input?
I don't know, we're gonna talk about that tonight later.
And, well, I mean, would we, as, as the residents, would we have any input on, like, ideas on what could have worked, or what could maybe work better, or anything like that, or is it just where you guys talk about yourselves and...
We're, we have multiple angles of, one Fargo and West Fargo are going through these, Fargo has the special assessment committee reviewing that, but West Fargo, we're taking information from both of those, and then we also have a state of the city coming up here next week, our comp plan meetings, we're taking feedback from that. So we'll probably be reaching out again at another point, saying, here you go, here's what we're proposing. We do not have a special assessment policy at this time, our policy is follow North Coast Entry Code.
But that's what we're gonna be, but that's what we're gonna be looking at.
Yes, so that's why we're going...
But you can also go to our website, there's the ability to submit a question or information, so please feel free to do that as well.
I did, I, I, yep, I did go on the website, and I actually submitted questions, and I know other people from our development did as well, and we didn't get a response, so, okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything? Okay, then we will move along to number seven, MetroCog Articles Association.
To summarize what the Articles Association is, is, MetroCog has two documents or items that need to be amended in order for an entity to be a full-fledged member of MetroCog. When Horace was added to the, as being a full-fledged member of MetroCog a couple years ago, the first item was done, but Articles Association was not. That was overlooked by, my understanding, the previous director there.
So they're in transition.
They're going through a transition, and they felt, they identified that this needs to be updated still, to have Horace be officially named a full-fledged member of MetroCog. Then their executive committee decided that it would be best that this would just be handled by their new executive director. They do have, their executive director now, Cindy Gray, is with MetroCog, and noticed the situation where we're not covered under Articles of Association, so they're asking all entities part of MetroCog to approve an amendment to it, to allow Horace to be a full-fledged member. We have some of the benefits of being a member already of MetroCog, our funding for the course transportation study and conference of plan, and then also the seventy-sixth quarter study, those are just some examples where we're getting some of the benefits, we do pay dues, so we're acting like a full-fledged member anyways, it's just formality, so we're looking for amendment. There are some handouts there, just identifying where the changes were included.
Is there a document, is there an attachment?
Just scroll down. Yeah, scroll down through, it's page nineteen, you'll start seeing the differences. It just says, instead of six members, it goes to seven, instead of fifteen members appropriate, or maximum of fifteen, it goes to maximum of sixteen, so it's just changing formality of including Horace in their bylaws and documents. But what they're looking for is approval of an amendment, a resolution approving Horace to be a member. So we, all entities, including Horace, would need to approve this resolution.
Again, this was something that they should have taken care of about a year ago, and that...
Couple years ago, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't get squared away when Cindy took over, it wasn't, that transition time, they didn't get this done.
So this is just their amended document that's included in here, they're listing Horace as a new member?
Yep, basically just including Horace in the area that's appropriate.
And that's just basically changing that verbiage to go up one with their...
Right. Approved. And also on the executive committee, it states, one member of the voting, or for each of the voting member of local jurisdictions versus a state, six policy board members.
And we do participate in that, Councilman Corcoran is, they're assigned for MetroCog activities, and then I am his alternate, so, since he's been out, I have been participating on the executive committee for Horace for that. Page forty-one, or page forty-one shows the Horace resolution, so we just have to have that signed.
So this is us approving this as a resolution to be included in the MetroCog? So...
It's more of a formality.
So we need a motion?
Yep, we need a motion, so...
I'll make a motion to approve us to, what it was, the language here, that we approve the resolution?
To the Articles Association, to the MetroCog's Articles, Articles Association.
Okay, Dave made a mo, Brian made a motion, Dave made a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, good, so let's try and get that done, so we get that one off the plate.
And that is going around, Cindy Gray has asked all the entities in the area to have that on their agendas and get that approved, so it is circling around.
It's basically an updated version of the document they've had in the past, but they've essentially got to accept us being on the list as well.
Yes, yes. But that's going around to...
That's a good next step.
That's going around to all the entities in the region for us.
Yep. Get it done, so...
Mayor Peterson, can we, I think we missed a couple of things under the initial, related to pledge securities, just to...
That was the consent agenda.
Other consent agenda, thank you. And then revenue expense report, plus there was a human resources consulting agreement.
Okay.
If you'd like to discuss those, we can typically consent, you don't, unless you want to discuss.
But I mean, if you want to, you can. That's, that's why we...
I'd walk through.
I guess the only specific one then would be, are we going to approve on the human resources consulting agreement, or are we okay with that?
That was the approval of the HR agreement, just basically having General be there for, resource for HR activities.
Because the previous contract ended it.
Yeah, and that's what this was to, just pick this up and keep it going.
So it's just a continuation of that, you don't have to be in your action. Let's do that here already.
So, you're good then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just check it through all of it.
Yep. All right, so on to number eight then, Matt, you got it?
All right, Maple Lakes Estates is a preliminary plat and rezone on what used to, or currently is called, and it may, used to be called after tonight, Olivia's Acres, which is on One Hundredth Avenue in the southwest corner of town. The rezone is a pretty simple rezone from R two and R six to R four. R two and R four in many ways are the same, the rezone is to create some more, basically the developer can make this lot model work, both of them feature seventy-foot minimum lot widths. So from a design standpoint, not a whole lot would be different under the rezone. And then the preliminary plat is a part of this too, and Planning Commission recommended approval of both the rezone.
Okay, did anybody in planning and zoning have any concerns at all with either one of these?
No.
I didn't hear anything either, that's why I'm asking. So... Do you have, you guys have any questions on that? Have a chance to look at that?
Looked at it, so, question is, is setbacks and stuff are all same, right? You said the minimums are seventy-foot widths, so we're not, so I remember on, didn't we on Olivia's Acres have some that were even smaller than that at points? So you're stating that the genres are bigger lots than previously?
They, they...
That's some that were fifty-foot wide.
So I've never seen the rescinded Olivia's Acres plat. What I can say is that there are lots within this R four zones, our zoning addresses minimums, not maximums. There are lots within this R four that will qualify as R two, so...
So the block three area in the middle, is that intended to be part, or what is that?
I believe that's intended to be a retention pond much like Prairie View. The developer is here today, he may be able to answer that question, but we don't have one more specifically than I can.
No, it'd be an actual pond.
Could be an actual pond than Prairie View?
Prairie View isn't an actual pond.
That would actually be storage, water retention area?
Yep.
Okay, just getting other questions on that?
So these lots, as are platter, are very similar to what Prairie View, what Prairie View is today?
No, there's some significant differences, one being the size of the lots, they're all seventy-foot widths on here, or majority of them are seventy, give or take.
Few are seventy-four.
A few, yeah, none are under seventy, correct. Another change, difference between this design, even though maybe the north part looks similar to Prairie View, the developer has worked well the city on, on adjusting his block lengths to fit the city's design standards, which is seventeen point eight. This is important because one of the, the, the changes that we hear, at least from the planning department for residents often, is how do we break up the, the singular views of garage doors? Or how do we break up the long blocks? Well, it's already in our code, we just enforce the design ordinance, and what we got out of this is, Plan Commission, in their opinion, two of the commissioners both told me this is the best design that they've seen for Olivia's Acres, and I know that there's been a few in the past. Basically, because of the shorter blocks, you're able to see the ends of the streets from no matter where you stand in the development, and it helps break up that, that singular frontage that you see.
How many lots is that, newbie?
John, how many lots?
One hundred and thirty-eight.
So there is a planned true road on the end on Hundred Fourth?
That is an existing right-of-way for that purpose.
Right. To connect to Seventy Sixth.
Just for reference, I think Olivia's Acres had eighty-four lots.
Yeah, I was trying to remember what that was too, so, okay. That was because he was trying to do something different in the south part there, wasn't it? Put some more housing there.
It was R two and then R six on the far side.
Right.
So was there a plan to connect that Hundred and Fourth or, because Seventy Sixth Street is an existing road, right, that will be a gravel, correct?
Yes.
That's a gravel area.
And I'm, I'm John Eunice with Eagle Ridge Development, and yeah, so, I've got a phasing plan right here that kind of shows how there's gonna be access both on Hundredth, and then there'll be a, with the first phase, there'll be an access down off of Hundred and Fourth that'll connect to the neighborhood immediately adjacent.
Okay, so that, that would be coordinated with that development to, to get that through a way, either paved, because I'm assuming that all this is, is curb and gutter?
Yes.
Correct?
Yep.
So curb and gutter, but there would have to be some negotiations sort of to make that connection over...
Right, I think right now the plan is a gravel connection outside of this development, but everything within Maple Lakes would be paved with curb and gutter.
And you're doing two phases, I see, so it's the, so how does that break down in terms of number of lots? The initial number of lots would be...
Eighty in the first phase and a balance in the second.
So, the, the water retention, is that intended to be a semi-permanent or mostly dry with, you know, holding water?
All three.
Only in, in high water or plant drain events?
Yeah, there'll be permanently wet ponds with the storage above the normal water elevation, so at any given time during the year, there will be normal water sitting in there. And all three of these ponds will end up being connected.
Okay, so there will be storm sewer connection through them to, and with a natural drainage along Hundred?
Yes.
How many acres is that?
I believe it's sixty acres, sixty-eight acres.
So the primary, I'm curious about the, the three size of the water ponds, is that because of the area or the, you know, is that to, to bring some of the land out of the flood zone, or mitigate some of the flood risk areas in that area?
Correct, yeah, the ponds were sized to generate enough volume to bring the residential lots out of the floodplain. It's similar to what we've done in the south part of Fargo, where there's some floodplain that we're working in. So you generate enough volume to raise the lots out, loom them, so that there's no flood insurance, and so that's how we size these ones.
Because that was an area that was flooded in oh-nine, I believe, right? So, that's the intention, is to raise the house flood to the point where this, these come out of that floodplain?
Yep, and we, we worked with the city engineer on determining the, the amount of free board requirements for the houses and those sorts of things.
So there would not be a, a water protection or any other, like a dike on the, on the western border of this? Because I think that was, it was the Cheyenne overflowing, right, coming from the west? That filled that area in oh-nine, correct? So there wouldn't be anything holding back any water from that direction?
Right, other than we are raising, raising up of the, raising up of the existing ground out there.
So how much would they be assessed per lot for this new sewer line?
That's the assessment committee, Dave, that's not us. That won't happen until we get that, get the sponsor. Yep. So... Unless I'm wrong here, Lucas, tell me if I misspoke, but I believe that's what it's gonna come down to.
Uh, for the previous one?
Well, for...
For the first sewer line that's already in place, they would have already been assessed if they had an assessment on there. I'm not sure what it was.
Yeah, so...
But yes, that's done.
If, if you're talking, if you're talking about the SSL line, how much they're paying for, that would be broken up based on the developed area, that would be broken up for how many lots. As for the sewer within that development?
Yeah, I understand that.
That would be a cost that we can't tell at this time. That would be up to them, yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, then...
Mr. Mayor, I have to open up here.
Yep, let's do a, a public hearing for the rezone, if anybody's got any, anything you want to talk about on the rezone. Nothing, nobody on the rezone? Okay, then I will close the public hearing on the rezone. And I ask for a motion to accept the rezone as is.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, he's a second.
Second.
Okay, Brian, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so it passes. For the preliminary plat, then I will open up the public hearing, if anybody's got any comments they want to make on that. Anybody got anything they want to talk about? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, the preliminary plat. If you guys have any more questions, then we accept a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor, there's conditions that the Planning Commission had, that they set at their February twelfth meeting. The first condition that the lots have to have twenty-five percent green space. Their next condition was that there can only be single-family houses in the development. And then they also would like fire department review and approval of the roads, and I'm not sure if that stuff has been checked out. So those are their three conditions that they had. The city council can accept those conditions, reject those conditions, or add your own conditions.
So what was the first, the first one again, was the green space?
Twenty-five percent green space.
Okay.
And all single-family homes, so, basically there's no combining of these lots to, to support multifamily home, right?
And the developer had no issues with those conditions.
Okay. So the only thing, you haven't contacted the fire department to get their approval yet?
I'm not sure if they've seen it, but we certainly are good with that condition as well, I mean, we'll... And they'll have time.
So in essence, if, even if we approve it tonight, you know, that'll be, if, for some reason, the fire department comes back and says, hey, we got an issue with X, Y, Z, we could still amend the preliminary plat, you know, before it's the final plat?
It'll just be a continued condition, because the other ones are still gonna be conditions that are the city council...
Because it is truly a preliminary plat, so there, there will be adjustments from here, okay?
Okay.
So, I move that we motion to accept the preliminary plat with the conditions provided by the planning and zoning.
Okay.
Second.
Make a motion, Brian, a second, all in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to, to Terror Gardens. He's got that one, Jim, you got that one?
Two. Is that... This, okay. Terror Gard, the change order for Terror, for Terror Gardens, uh, to, is to adjust the utilities that have been previously installed to a grade that more accurately represents the final grade of the existing subdivision, there was a Boston initial survey, the design was based off of, and this change order adjusts the utilities up to a new proposed finished grade, and also some moves, some balance of grading of earthwork around the subdivisions, so... The developers representative and the engineer are here, if you have any questions for them. I think the total for the year was an increase of ninety-two thousand, six hundred dollars. There were two options that were presented, one was to lower the site to the original, I think the assumed design elevation was, or raise the utilities, and it was decided it is better to raise the, raise the utilities versus lower the site, so... Any questions?
First I, I ask where these funds come from, we have contingency rate as what would potentially come out?
Yep, yep, if you were to approve the change order, the funds would come out of the contingency.
And what is it, what percentage of the contingency typically of a, this contract?
Ten percent is the contingency, so the total bid was, we've got roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingencies.
Okay, what typically is contingencies, or what's the definition of the usage of the contingency? Do we have anything like that, of how it's be, how it's used, that type of stuff? Is this typically used for an unknown, or something that comes up, that type of stuff?
Sub, yeah, an unforeseen kind of...
Unforeseen?
Yeah.
Type things?
Unknown, yeah. A deviation in, in contract, there is standard, typical construction deviation just from the design versus an as constructed quantity, so...
Something pops up during the process?
It's not uncommon to underrun some of the quantities too, so you can get a little bit, a little bit confusing with that, so...
Okay, I guess I'm gonna ask a very pointed question, this seems like a mistake versus an unknown that popped up, so could you guys kind of explain what happened, just to give us the background on it, please?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, Peterson and City Council. Jack Dwyer on behalf of Piso Plains Two, the developer, and John Lowry and Andrew Thrill from, from, from Lowry Engineering are here. I would like to just give you an explanation and respond to your question. So, yeah, it's unfortunate, the, the landowner group had initially worked with Houston Engineering, who... who provided some preliminary layouts and also some, just some design consulting before either I or Lowery Engineering were involved. And the landowner group then eventually hired Lowery Engineering, and then during that process, my understanding is that the landowner group had asked Lowery Engineering if they could reuse some of Houston's work that they had already done. And the Justin Berg, who is the, the president of Peaceful Plains, he acquired an editable or a DWG file from Houston Engineering with the topo that Houston did with a drone, and he provided that to Lowery Engineering. Lowery Engineering went out and did some hard shots with their surveyor along the, on the outside boundary, and they're here and they could probably explain a little bit better than I can, but at some of the tie-in locations. And they, those hard shots were within parameters, and what's disappointing is that after we, after the design was completed and after this went into construction, last summer we've, we determined that this site was not matching the design grade and, and it's weird that it, it's off in the middle of the site but not on the outside boundaries. We do have, I don't know if that's been provided, the, the difference between the existing and the, the actual topo file. And so, so anyways, yeah, that, there was a human error, you know, that, that was, I guess, initially done by Houston Engineering and that was promulgated through, you know, the design and then the construction, it wasn't, wasn't determined or, or wasn't detected until, you know, a lot of work had been done. And so it's unfortunate, we're disappointed. And, and to, I guess, talk a little bit about the request. The, initially when we were, when we, the developer, the developer was negotiating a developers agreement with the city, we had asked that the city bond for seven percent of contingency money. The city ultimately determined that ten was a safer number and bonded for ten percent with an approximate three million dollar of construction. I believe that there was close to three hundred thousand dollars in contingency money.
Two fifty-ish to three?
Two fifty?
I think it was closer to three fifty, because if I remember right, we based it off of the original, the contract price.
Okay.
Hundred percent of that.
Yeah, because your contract price is basically two point four.
Two point five, sorry.
Two point five.
Approximately, it's a little bit less than that, hundred, a few hundred dollars.
Right, so there would be, if this change order was approved, there would still be money left over for any unforeseen conditions. The infrastructure or the utilities have, have been constructed, not counting the, the change order and then the gravelling and the asphalt and the paving, so. Yeah, I guess in our opinion, there's enough contingency money available. And then we also reached an addendum, if you recall, and Mr. Crocker can probably speak to this. We reached an addendum to the developers agreement and what that, from memory, I guess, the, I believe that addendum provides that the, if, if the contingency money is not at a level at the end of the project that makes the city feel comfortable, the developer will be responsible for, for a portion over there or the cost of that second lift of asphalt. And so, you know, we do have an addendum that, that indicates that, you know, farther on down the road if, if the city's contingency fund is not sufficient to meet any, any obligations that the developer will, will have to kick in money at that time. And so I guess I'd ask, you know, the city to, or the city attorney to take a look at that.
But the issue though is that the original topographic maps for that area were wrong. And that's, that's what caused the design here, so to speak, and layout, you know, if there was an extra fill that was going to be required to place these at the correct elevation, correct?
That's right, so I, John Lowery of Lowery Engineering, and, you know, it's always disappointing, as Jack said, to, to have a man error come into something. This is not even the standards that we have, you know, we expect to catch things like this, but this was a unique situation where the surface itself compared to the actual surface out there and what we thought it was, created a bowl through the middle of the site. I still can't to this day figure out what happened to the, the surface that we were designing from, but it became very apparent in the field. They raised some issues, that some hydrants were being, being brought to the surface, we went out and they went all the way above foot and a half wall. And we examined the site that day, worked with Jim, and it became very apparent that, like we said, that the edges of the surface were tining in, the center of the surface from the survey that we received was not correct, that's correct. And so in order to better fit, there were a few different options that we had at that point in time. We could move forward with the design, everything was still out of the flood plain, you know, it was just going to generate a lot of extra dirt in order to do that, and probably comparable cost to do that work, and then you have a pile of dirt to get rid of, which maybe is the worst thing in the world considering we live in the valley, right? But nobody ever said, hey, let's lower that site down, we're too high, right, in, in Horace or Parkdale. So given that, given that we discussed that with the city, the best solution really is to adjust to the actual grades on site, and that's where this comes from. So paving, none of that stuff is impacted, but the existing services and, excuse me, the existing valve boxes and hydrant extensions and things like that, storm manholes need to be done properly and everything is proposed to be done.
At this point, we've caught it before any more damage is caused, so to speak, because you're right, if, if this had been gone any longer with paving would have been in place, now we've got a much larger cost involved.
Right, correct.
This work does have to be done too, in order for the project to perform, it's something that will have to be done.
Yes, well, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's not, it's really not enough.
I mean, if it's a bowl, I mean, yeah, we don't want to create a, create a flooding issue.
And like John said, it doesn't, it was vetted in the process, it didn't make a lot of sense to lower the site next to Drain Twenty-Seven.
Correct.
Something that doesn't get done, I mean, better off, and quite honestly, I'd rather have utilities low and have to bring them up than too high.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That's worse.
So it's just unfortunate that this wasn't caught so that we can get it to the right point.
It's unfortunate the air, it's unfortunate the air was made in the first place and that it wasn't caught sooner, that's absolutely correct.
One thing that you might want to consider too is that had, had the original topo survey been correct, the quantity that's on here would have been included in the original bid.
That's correct.
So the costs, most of the costs would have been there anyway.
I don't think, I didn't see significant cost.
Wouldn't you have put the, if you knew that the levels had to come up, wouldn't the utilities and stuff, would put in higher?
No.
Isn't this just cost of extensions and those types of things?
Yeah, so, so what happens if you've got elevation of zero is where your manhole was? If your top was at a fifty, now it's at a fifty-three, so you've bit it with fifty feet of, of manhole, now you need fifty-three feet. If the elevation was correct in the first place, you would have bit it with fifty-three. It wouldn't have been, it's just the difference, difference of bringing it up. The base elevation, like the inverts and the bottoms, they would all stay the same.
Sanitary tie-ins are the, are the storm sewer, we're putting that as deep as we can. So everything, the design is still solid, it's not, it's just this minor adjustment in the.
The constraint is the lift station of prairie, this sewer ties into lift station of prairie, so.
Okay, I missed something, then. Oh, so the fill is actually thirteen-eight of the costs. And then the seventy-eight thousand is the additional raising service, okay, all right, I missed that.
Extensions, right, of, and the services that are needed to bring it to that level.
Correct.
Extensions and so forth, okay.
So who would pay for this two point four million dollar change order?
It's not two point four million dollars, it's a ninety-two thousand dollar change order, the original contract was two point four. So in the original contract that we have for our bonds, there is a contingency fund, I'm just trying to be conservative, probably use that contingency fund. And this all is paid for by the, by the project, by the special assessments for that development specifically.
The district boundary is essentially the subdivision deal.
So nobody outside of that subdivision will pay additionally. I'm just concerned because there's other things that potentially come up and I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Can I see to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so a lot of times those things come up when you're giving the underground work. With the underground work is complete except for any fixes that we have, and Jim, I see him checking, he can speak more to this as well. But, you know, it's surface work at this point, barring getting a bad batch of asphalt, which never happens, you know, the contractor's responsible for it anyways. You know, the contingencies are pretty, any unforeseen incident is pretty well shown its head at this point.
So is there any option of, I know it's unpopular, but is there any option to go back to Houston to produce the original bad data? To say, hey, you've got some culpability here to make this right? Because I'm assuming somebody paid for that, cop them out, and now, so you gave us bad data.
How long ago was that? Do you guys know when it was done, when that actual, I'm assuming that was done a while back, that's my, you know?
I, I think it was done within the last few years, but even compared to lightar surfaces that are old, the lightar surface ties in much better than the actual survey surface than what we received. So, you know, like we said, we took hard shots around the perimeter and at our tie-in points, asphalt tie-ins, storm through, those types of things when we were out there, and everything was matching well, and I don't know what happened in the center of the site to create this bowl. But I have a question for, for the developer.
Yeah, I think there would be, there would be an opportunity to, I believe that the statute of limitations for professional negligence is two years. I believe, I have to look back, I think, or malpractice. And I believe it would be, it was done within the last two years. You know, then also there would be some sort of, it might be, the, the timeline might not run until the problem could be detected. So I think we'd probably, if, if your question was, are we within a timeline to, to seek recourse against Houston, I think we are.
Well, the challenge is you've essentially had to go pay to go reshoot the entire lot and the whole development, which should have been, if you had used the original data, you wouldn't have had to go do that, right? So the only reason you had to do that because the data was wrong and there was a problem. And that forced you and to go get elevation data, so in essence, at a minimum, you should probably recover, recover the cost of whatever they charge you for that original topographic map. It's just, I mean, assertion, but I don't know whether that's true or not, so.
I, I do, oh.
The question was, the base would be lower than it's supposed to be then, right? So you're going to have to add, add the expense for raising that base point. If the elevation right now is too low, you probably have certain, there's certain feet that the base point needs to be at where you're coming from, and it's lower than it should be right now, right? So when you add that dirt, you're actually adding the base.
The dirt is higher, the dirt is higher, the utilities are brought up.
The finished grade is all the changes, the piping utilities, it's all at the design grade, because that was based off of existing.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the lower or put in lower because of the, the hole?
Yeah, it's not a clean sheet. That's the thing, it's not everything's one foot lower, we tied in all the tie-ins, we'd be happy to add it in there. It was a, a unique situation.
Okay, so anybody have any other questions?
Yes.
What I was going to add is, what I see your options are, is one, you could approve the change order, allow it to confirm the contingency. Or you could say the change order, yes, it needs to happen, however, it's not allowed to tap into the contingency and it's up to the developer to figure out how that is paid for. If there is an issue amongst Houston or another party, that would be likely, and Lucas could expand on the developer to find, you know, determine that, because it could be a lot of finger pointing on this and it could be a lot of, you know, there could be a delay on the project by doing that. I don't know for sure, I'm not, not in the legal world of an attorney, but those are your couple options, or you could deny a change order straight up and say, no, go back to the drawing board. I wouldn't recommend that one, but it'd be up to the, we, we recognize the change order probably needs to happen because you need to raise the utilities to let it move forward. However, there are costs tied to this and would you want to allow to hit the contingency or not? So those are options, I just wanted to clarify so everybody knows.
No, yeah.
That's what you have really you're facing.
Lucas, you got anything you want to add in on this?
That's exactly what I would say too, it's, it's not really an issue for the city unless you want the timing of it to be done now and then it's easier obviously just to use the contingency fund. But otherwise, I would say it's the developer's responsibility to go after Houston or whoever they deem appropriate to get the money back to pay for this. Not the city, so it's, it's up to city council what you guys want to do, like Brian said, those are your two options. Not three options, I guess.
But in the end, if you end up going over, you know, consuming all the contingency and end up needing additional funds, that's still going to go back to the development and they're going to have to, you know, the, the landlord is going to end up paying that cost, correct?
Or the developer would.
Well, Mr. Dwyer.
Or that, that, those funds would be spread into the development costs of the land and the lot.
What I was going to say, Mr. Dwyer was correct about the addendum of how we have it set up is for the contingency. If there is not enough in the contingency to cover the second year on the final lift, that the developer is responsible for covering the remaining costs. Why we did that before was with some other developments, we had issues with contingency fund being exhausted or close to it, where it was being used up quite a bit, so we wanted to make sure that there was enough funds there in order to cover the second, or the final lift. Also, we took their, their engineer's recommendation for a cost for that final lift where it was reduced down to get the bond dollar amount a little lower, so those are the reasons behind that addendum to the original agreement.
And just to be clear too, the, the total contract price, including that contingency, is what we bond for and if any money is not utilized at any point, then that goes back to paying off, back to pay off the bonds, correct? So if we have a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand left.
You can use it for like, you say for that street over there, or you can use it to pay out.
Some point if there's leftover, we would put that back.
How, how this.
Barely happens, right?
How this bond was structured.
There's money left over at the end of term, I know, it's just the city's general fund, or you could use it to pay the bonds.
What, what we've done before is we've set it off into a fund for that development, so if there was impermiss to the road, we would go into that. But this is one of the last ones that we've done that approach in the future. How we're doing is special assessment bonding is to do a ten bond, so we have that cost more exact in the future.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, just so that, you know, when we work on these developments, we work hard to keep specials low. We try to have a, an efficient design, and we negotiate with the city on the developers agreement to keep specials low, to keep those contingency monies low, and, and this is unfortunate. We have learned from, from the past and we've, haven't proposed any developer cha, requested change orders. I guess our preference would be for the city to take this out of the contingency money, and so that would be the request of the developer.
I don't see any other option, as the engineer pointed out, that we have to raise the services we can.
No, we can't.
I, I think this is a, you know, a moot point, but we're gathering all the information, so thank you for providing all the information, but I'll make a motion and we approve the change order, okay?
Dave?
Before I state yes or no, I just want to make sure that we're clear that, we've all stated that if dollars go over, it's in the agreement, you guys would carry that additional amount of that. If, if for some reason dollars went over that contingency amount, the developer is taking on those additional dollars, correct?
And Councilman Fennell, and I guess I would ask that you ask your own attorney or your city administrator that question?
I'll have to look at the addendum to see what it actually states.
Because does it state that it's only for the second lift, or is it a state?
And that, that's my concern, is that it might be limited to.
It's for the lift.
Yeah. It's limited to just the lift.
But if the contingency is used up for other means, whatever is left over in that contingency, if that's not enough to make up the balance needed for that second lift, that is the developer's cost. if that's not enough to make up the balance needed for that second lift, that is the developer's cost. So the council doesn't have to approve some other contingencies down the road, for example.
And Councilman, I would point out too, that any other change orders that come in front of you would need, you know, any other costs for this project? Would be, need to be approved by a change order?
No, I understand, I understand, I'm just trying to get at, if for some reason this contingency gets used up, in the end, if we're going to come back with an additional change order, does that mean additional bonding? Or somehow it gets put in, you know, even if it's a, another hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, it has to be put into the bond, and then it goes to special assessments, and all has to be approved, right? That's our process, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, if the contingencies exceeded the dollar amount, it would either be a bond, or say you'd have to make it up, or the developer.
All right.
Those are your three options.
Okay, we got a motion from Brian.
I'll, uh, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so Dave seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number ten here. Brent, I think you got this one, don't you?
Oh, either one, the one, the main thing we had for ten is, uh, just an update for West Fargo School Districts. I know, uh, Mayor Pearson and, did you, Brian, did you go too? No, just Corey went correct.
No, Brian was.
Oh, I went over to that, to that presentation, hold on.
Both went, or both you guys went to the last school board meeting, where they made a decision on the names of the middle school and high school. Middle school's name is Heritage High School, the high school, or Heritage Middle School. And the high school's name is West Fargo Forest High School. Uh, both of those names were ones that Mayor Pearson and Councilmember Schmidt, uh, spoke on behalf of the city, asking that those be considerably, uh, to give some, you know, resemblance or respect to Horace. Uh, there is, there's some history there between Horace High School, there was a Horace High School before.
And it complemented the survey that the folks had taken, so it was just basically to put an accent mark on that. So they understood that that's what, uh, that's what the voice of this town was, pretty much.
It was a split, fairly split vote, it was a four to three vote.
A lot closer than I thought it would be.
But they did vote in favor of it. Uh, the students, my understanding, will be choosing the mascot and colors fairly soon. And that will be announced in the future.
Yep, it was brought up that, uh, Horace did give Cheyenne their old mascot, the Mustangs, that got brought up there.
Really?
Yeah, so, just so they knew that, and so that's why I got, uh, tried a different one for the town here now, but.
It'll be difficult.
Yeah.
I was involved in coloring of Cheyenne for colors, and it's tough.
Yep, so, but anyway, so that part's moved on now, so that's just basically the kids will be able to do the mascot, but I mean, the names are done.
Yeah, the names are set, except Heritage High, or Heritage Middle School and West Fargo Horace High School. Uh, a lot of folks see comments on about, uh, not real thrilled about saying West Fargo Horace. Uh, Cheyenne is actually West Fargo Cheyenne High School, so it does sound.
I don't know how many people refer to it as that.
But a lot of people refer to just Cheyenne High School.
Even the middle schools, I think, aren't they referred to as West Fargo Little School, West Fargo.
I believe they are.
So I mean, it's, that's, everybody would just drop the West Fargo other than the high school.
It's, anyway, the sentiment of the town is in the school, so we're good, we're good there.
Yep.
Okay, on to number eleven.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, item number eleven is the developer's agreement for the West Fargo School Edition. Um, whether or not we end up having seven versions of the developer's agreement.
I know it went back and forth a few iterations, so, but at least we got her done.
The city, yeah, the city got what it needed out of the developer's agreement.
Okay, that was, that's all that really mattered on that one, too.
Had some, had some issues with it, but, uh, we got it resolved. Um, there's also going to be a pond use agreement, uh, that will probably end with, but this is just the developer's agreement saying that there's going to be four lots there, the city's going to assume ownership of their tension pond. Um, ways out of obligations of the school, uh, the city, and Southeast Cass, or, excuse me, Casserole Water users district.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my, been my first question here in this paragraph, says the city will design, construct, and install its interior water service lines. That's Casserole Water, it's not the city.
Correct, you entered into an agreement with Casserole in two thousand fifteen, where the city installs it, and then Casserole creates an assessment district, and then they pay for it.
Oh, so they, okay, they reimburse us for that cost?
They, they designed it and worked with, Jim worked with Casserole on, on the improvements, and then they'll end up creating that assessment district and pay for it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, and the park boards got their agreement tied.
So the, the Casserole agreement is Exhibit A, uh, that's included. And then the park district's agreement is also attached as an exhibit, so both those are attached. Uh, I informed all the parties that the city will retain the original signature pages from each entity, and I will send copies to the others.
Perfect.
It's, it's a straightforward agreement that just basically says the obligations of each party, and then, um, the city has the ultimate zoning authority on it.
And this has been reviewed and approved by the planning board?
They do not review the developer's agreement.
This is more where you're backing.
This is just with us, this is between us and the park, the school board.
So, this, this version's been agreed upon by West Fargo, in fact, West Fargo's lawyers too, right?
Yes.
The school's lawyer?
Yep, the school, the school lawyer's filing, yeah.
So they're just waiting, everybody has, have the, have the West Fargo School District approval?
The school has approved and signed, Casserole has approved and signed, city council's the last one.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the developer's agreement.
So moved.
Dave is the first, Brian is the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Good.
So you just approved something that the city's got to pay for assessment?
No.
That's why our.
This is a developer, a developer's agreement.
This isn't going to do anything.
Nothing to do with special. Dealing with assessments there, but, or paragraph, no.
Correct, assessments for the district, which the district is the school. So the school will be responsible for paying.
The, the district in this one is Casserole.
Oh.
Yeah, so they're, so for their water purposes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to number twelve. Matt, you got that one?
It was approached and asked to write an ordinance to allow for the operation of food trucks within the city of Horace. Uh, the ordinance is written by me and edited by Lucas, uh, that's what you have in front of you. Uh, there's, there's a two-pronged reason for this. The first one is this summer, there'll be an influx of construction workers, and there'll be some decreased access on seventeen. Uh, this allows for the city to provide amenities to this, jobs, people who brought jobs into the city of Horace. Um, also, I'm a believer, the big believer, that, uh, commercial growth is most successful when it's done incrementally, and this is a great step towards that. It allows for the diversification of restaurant base in Horace without, uh, in an easier way, because it allows for, you know, range of restaurants to come in and out. Um, there is one other food truck ordinance in the state of North Dakota, uh, it's in Williston. This ordinance is based off of that, but there are some changes because Williston's situation was a little bit different. Food truck areas in Horace is, uh, I think the main difference. Uh, in Williston, they were only permitted for two, on particular streets, and none of them were downtown streets, if I recall correctly. Here, we allow food truck ord- food truck, a food truck area is defined as, as private-y own property in specific zones that then, um, within that property, that can comply with ADA and, and all of the regulatory pieces that come with operating food truck on private property. So, uh, the recommendation would be to approve the first, or to have the first reading, is that correct, Lucas? And then, um, we would, upon that, the next step is, based on how the ordinance is written, we would begin writing out the applications and the, the, um, submittal forms for this, for review upon sending it.
Well, so the question is, they, we can grant the license for, to allow them to operate within the city limits.
Correct.
And we would, we would assure, I guess the question is, whose responsibility is it to make sure that their license is current, valid, and not expired?
That would be the city's.
The city's.
Yeah, so there's, in the application, the, there's the two, there's two pieces that come to the application. One would be an application itself, and the other piece would be permission from the property owner or a light, like, letter from the property owner saying, yes, this food truck will be operating on my property and, uh, you know, under these conditions, so.
Because the other element of this is that they're going to put a department of health, right? They have to produce evidence that they've been approved and they're holding the correct permits from the department.
Part of the, part of the.
And that's not going to be our responsibility to inspect, do those inspections, correct?
Not, not to do, right, yeah.
They have to provide it to the city. They have to provide insurance.
Right, but I, I, I know, I mean, inspections on, you know, health issues are, who's that fault to? And I mean, if we're going to be doing the license inspections, who's going to make sure that they're following Department of Health licenses?
That's Department of Health. So they're regulated like a restaurant in this case, which is why, uh, there may, there was discussion about doing a food truck ordinance and a temporary vendor ordinance together. Uh, food trucks are regulated differently, and it makes sense to separate them because they're regulated like restaurants, so. They're inspected in a manner similar to restaurants, so.
Okay, so are we going to start, if we do this tonight, are you guys going to start thinking about where those locations would be? Or is this going to be a general area that we would allow this to happen, and allow everywhere?
No, well, so in the draft ordinance here, under section six oh four, it outlines what the areas in which the city of Horace would allow for food trucks.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, uh, I can read them to you really quickly. It's any parking area, public area, vacant space in a property which is owned commercial, industrial, or a public facility. Uh, parking area, public area, or vacant space within a religious or fraternal institution. Uh, city park as determined by the park board, and public right-of-way as determined by U. City Council.
Yeah, so that would.
So what you, what you stated though, earlier, just before though, is that you stated if it's a horse Lutheran church wanted to allow these food trucks, the food truck vendor would have to come with a letter that states they've contacted, they've gotten approval, it's been verified that.
Correct, and, and that is, in, in, even though there's only one food truck ordinance in North Dakota, if you look at other ordinances across the Midwest, that is, that's commonplace, so.
Have we been approached?
Lucas, what do you got?
So a base, uh, subsection of this, or a big section, is ten oh six oh two, subsection two. So that one says, upon recommendation from city staff, the city council may approve, conditionally approve, or deny a food truck license application based on the applicant's compliance with this chapter, qualifications of the applicant, amount of licenses previously approved, and other factors deemed reasonable by the city council in determining whether or not a license should be issued to the applicant. So that just said, if you guys think there's too many food trucks, you can say, you know what, there's too many food trucks. Sorry.
Right.
So that, that paragraph or that subsection really gives you a lot of discretion as a city council to approve.
You can contain what I mean, it's, you don't have fifty people.
Correct.
You can, you pick a size.
But they have to, it basically has to come to the city council and be approved of this, so this will be a regular agenda going forward. If there's somebody that's coming in and requesting this, and when we grant these, are they specifically a year, one, week, one year?
Yeah, all of them are just one year.
So their, the duration is specified on the application?
Yes.
It's specified in ordinance, they all expire on November one.
No matter when you get it, the expiration of November one has to reapply.
But we, but we can make them shorter term if needed. As, as part of the application, if, if you say, okay, we're only going to grant you this for one month, or, you know, two months or three months, whatever it is, we can set that duration for the license, but by default, they all expire annually.
I guess I don't know why we do that, because we're not going to, think of prorating the fee, I mean, it's the fee to get the license.
No, I, no, we're just thinking for that situation, there's certain limitations that we want to place on, on a, one of the food carts.
And it, yes, it says that you can conditionally approve. So if you want to put a condition on it, you already have carried a condition.
And it also, this also gives the ability for us to pull these licenses as well.
And you think that's probably, that's probably.
And there's a code enforcement piece in here also.
Yeah. Okay.
I think, I guess the, the goal is, right, is we see that there's going to be a significant amount of construction in this town, and, and, uh, I know figures will be very, very busy, but I think we're going to saturate them, so we want to make sure that these people don't have to always leave, so. It might be really important for individuals to have some additional options, right?
Yeah, some different options in town here. Okay, anybody got any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I'm going to entertain a motion to, uh, accept the first reading.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion. Brian, what are you thinking over there?
Makes me nervous, but this is just the first reading, so we'll, we'll continue the discussion.
Is that a second?
I'll, I'll second that. I want to, I want to read this more in depth, because I, I just, it, it seems odd to me that, okay, why is Williston the only other? I mean, I'm assuming Fargo has one.
Fargo has, the way that I understand it is Fargo has a, a policy white paper, as you could say, that they can use to regulate food trucks, but it's not built into their code. Um, I, one of the reasons I think Willis- there's only one city in North Dakota that we can find that has one is because it's cold in North Dakota, and because the season for food trucks in most places is usually very short.
And that's the thing, we're not going to have a stampede of food trucks running into our door and applying for permits, but.
We have them at our office like every day.
What?
We have them at our office every day in the summer.
Right, right, I was just saying.
But you don't have, but you don't have fifty different ones on rotation, it's, I've only known of seven or eight different places that do food trucks in Fargo area.
And Fargo does, Fargo does, has restrictions on it, because I know you can't have a food truck downtown. So they, they have some sort of regulation on it, it might not be ordinance.
I think they have special events too, don't they?
They do, yeah, they do.
They do.
Because they are, they do show up downtown, but it's usually during a special event, or a street fair, yep.
Or, or in that's, they use that old Goodyear.
Yep, the old Goodyear parking lot there, because you got somebody set up there once in a while. Out of bounds.
I'm assuming the rates and so forth for the permits will vary, or is there going to be, that'll, the rate schedule so will be approved by resolution?
That could be adjusted within.
I mean, there, there isn't a reference here to a rate.
It says it's set by city council.
It would just be included.
So there is a clause in here that's set by resolution, okay, I didn't see that.
Okay, so we got the first and the second.
Second.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Yeah, so let's try and tune that a little bit, and then we'll, we'll talk again here.
It's my only, it's my only concern, right, because, okay, there's only one other city, why?
Keep blazing a trail.
Y'all told me to get a bigger coat.
Keep blazing a trail. Sometimes you get caught.
One, one thing I would say too is, uh, the food ordinance has been appro- or approached by Fargo and other entities before. They haven't been able to either reach an agreement on like the areas or different components of it, to where, like Fargo, for example, they did a policy instead of doing the ordinance. And, like you're saying, just that flux construction, everything, we see that as a feasible option also. Not many places have the dynamics we have going on here, so. It's best to have it now, instead of trying to.
Oh, I agree, I'd rather do it ahead of time.
I would suspect that we're probably going to be refining this as we go along here too.
Yeah, I think the key to doing it as an ordinance, rather than as a policy or as some other document, is this gives, it, it shows the citizens this is firmly what it is, and it also gives direction about how to enforce issues with it, so.
Okay. All right, so we move along here, thirteen, water and sewer rates.
This is, to be treated more as a general discussion tonight, uh, to talk about water and sewer rates. I was intending to come in to tonight's discussion to talk more specific dollar amounts. However, uh, in talking with some of our public work, with our public work staff members today, you mentioned that, uh, an individual from, uh, the state or connections to the state has reached out to us to work with us to do some water rate study and sewer rate study, or analysis, to really analyze the numbers and give, or, and we could get a recommendation of what the rate could or should be. We have had some issues with how the rate has been applied, we talked about that some last week, or at the last council meeting. However, uh, our current base of twelve dollars is not going to get us too far if we want to improve the water quality, improve our water tower, our storage capabilities. If we're wanting to do our treatment or connection line to Fargo or Casserole, it would be very limited, our ability to borrow money or do anything like that. In addition, that complicates things, is we have been notified by the state that we are unable to obtain an SRF loan at this time. SRF is State Revolving Loan Fund, it's a two percent loan. Uh, the reason behind it is our audit. So their findings in audit that have concerned them, they want those addressed, which we are trying to get resolved. However, until those are resolved and addressed, which one item is our utility rate. That was not as much in the audit as it was from the North Dakota Finance Authority. They're saying that we have to have a rate that is adequate enough to account for the different variables. So, operations, maintenance, capital, capital's the biggie. If we borrow money, we have to have money set aside in a reserve fund every time we take a loan out, so we have. Every time we take a loan out, so we have the loan with the water meters, with that water meter program, water replace, water meter replacement program. Within five years of those funds being exhausted out of the loan. We have to have a certain dollar amount into a reserve account, basically. Available, it's pretty much a year payment or some money for a payment, it's hundred twenty percent of the loan amount or payment amount for that year. So we have to have money in our reserves, capital, we can't be borrowing capital money to do a bond payment. That's another issue that was identified, so we have to clean that up, we're working on cleaning that up, but we have to clean that up. Ask for a rate, so like I said, we're gonna have, uh, folks work with us to analyze the rates. Give a good sound recommendation to council, give you options. I will warn you that what they will come back with is likely going to be very high. Because we have charged so little for so long. Our base rate before, or I mean, our dollar for use, or it was a dollar per thousand gallons usage, we bumped it up to three dollars. But that rate wasn't being applied correctly. Uh, council had, uh, at, we cleaned this up at the last meeting, but where there was, when you guys approved the twelve dollar. You intended to be a base, it was applied as a minimum. So that is costing us there too. We're working, we're gonna be working on getting the word out to residents that they aren't gonna see an increased bill, we're gonna phase. The approach a little bit over a period, you know, at least a couple of months here, but we're getting up to the base. And what it was intended to, what it was approved to, what council expectations were to be applied in October. I believe that base was actually, or that rate was actually applied, the twelve dollar base and the three dollar cost per thousand. Was approved more a year ago, I believe that was even before I even got here.
It was about March when we agreed that October one was when the rate was supposed to go into the fat.
So I, I believe that was approved before I even got here.
It just hadn't been implemented.
But it wasn't implemented, we delayed it due to the water meters and then it was, the buildings weren't applied correctly. So there was a break also on there. It was with that change, or that adjustment there, you know, or with that impact, it was, residents were not charged. More, they were actually charged significantly less than what they should have been, we're not gonna go back and say, hey. You know, you should have been charged this year, you, you need to pay that much, we're not going back on that, that isn't right to do.
So I think right now.
Correcting the problem, resolving, resolving the issue.
I think it would be who of us right now to get the consultant and just get an idea of what do we need to have for that base to do. What we need to do to keep the state happy with this.
Yeah.
And get back in the graces, cause we're gonna need that sooner than later.
Now, one thing also, to keep this, keep the communication going, everything is, I do see this as coming back to council. Even to chip at the discussion and debate, so we're not sitting here talking about it for an hour each time. If we have those discussions, update you where we're at. And everybody's able to have a chance to know what's going on. Is the intention of it, hopefully a decision could be made by council then within, you know, a month or two or. Depending how long it takes to get this rate analysis complete.
At a minimum, can we get something in the, okay, so I guess the first question is, are we planning on applying the rates for the April one? Or are we just gonna notify residents that it's going to happen and we need to pick a date when that's gonna be applied?
That would be up to council, if you guys would like to have it start April one or, or the next utility bill, or if you would like it to be. Like a warning in the letter and then do it the next time, how would you wanna do it? Uh, one thing that we have done is now we are on automatic reads. So the meters are reading fairly accurate, those meters are very accurate meters. If your water usage says you're using seventy-five hundred gallons of water and you've always seen it before. People say you had a meter in your house for thirty years, it was the same meter. You're probably using seventy-five hundred wa, gallons of water. Like I said, the accuracy of these meters is phenomenal.
So at a minimum, I guess, I, I guess that's the question, if we're not, if we're not going to apply the rates, then. I would like to apply the rates April one, but you probably do need to get some notification of that it's gonna happen.
No, what we could do.
So at a minimum, we need to get something in the, the current water bill. A note there that's saying, okay, here's rate resolution, here's what's going to be applied. If, if we feel like it's too soon for April one, then May first, these are the rates that are gonna be applied. So it's clear that everyone go on the website, go out to, you know, or just state what the rates are, include that in the water bill for this. Starting May one, here, here are the rates that are gonna be.
So the intention is to have a letter explaining your situation to your residents with the next water bill.
Yep.
So when they'll go out into this month, a letter would say, here's what we're going through, so they know.
You have to, that's a minimum.
Yep, that's a minimum. So if you guys, if the council does want us to charge that water and sewer rate differently, I mean, it'll, it'll cost, we'll lose some funds. But it would help with the communication out there. Um, but we do plan on reaching out a couple of different ways to get that word out saying, hey. Here's an issue, we caught it, we're resolving it and moving forward. And showing them also, here are the improvements that we're planning on making. So folks know, I mean, council, start the process.
Number one, number one, we have to cover the cost of delivery. That, that's, that's the primary reason for the changes, is just to cover, cover the cost of delivery.
Yep.
So we're trying to get the funds back to zero is part of, is the primary reason. So we're not there, right now we're losing money every month. So that's, that's a fundamental issue.
Is it possible for the, the, where the horse happening?
We plan on it.
Huh?
We plan on doing so.
Yeah, that one is coming out now.
This has been published multiple times over the past year.
But you know what, a lot of the water bills are ACH, so a lot of people probably don't look at them.
They haven't seen, they haven't seen these rates, people haven't seen these rates.
I know, but let's just say for example, they have an ACH, it's fifty dollars instead of twenty-two dollars. Maybe they don't look at it, so therefore put it in the horse happenings, because I think a lot of people read that.
That is our plan, is to communicate.
We're also gonna send it in their water bills.
It's going in the water bill, so it's gonna be every month. In your water bill, so.
Yeah, we'll put it in the horse happenings too.
We, we have plans to put it within horse happenings, within a letter within the water bill explaining it. So there's gonna be multiple angles where we explain what's going on. Uh, have the, have residents seen this water rate? They have seen the three dollars per thousand gallons, they have seen that charge, what they haven't seen is the base. The base was supposed to be twelve dollars, not your first four thousand gallons is covered within that twelve dollars, that. That was not the intention of the council, um, so that's where the discrepancy is. But there would be something explaining that situation. Horse happenings, it may be briefer saying, hey, there's gonna be a letter coming out, but here's what's going on. But that is our intention, and also we've, uh, dedicated resources to significantly improve horse happenings, our communications means. Um, that's in the process and we're going to have a very different look, horse happenings coming out in not too long. Probably within the next week or so, that's our goal, is to have it out. You know, like I said, it would be a very different approach.
It's gonna be quarterly now, right?
Quarterly with two special issues, so, yep. And it'll have a more professional appeal to it.
Plus we'll continue though with the monthly in your water bills with announcements of these types of things and that kinda stuff as well.
Yep.
So then my request, I don't know if we need a motion or whatever, would be. Number one, you're gonna have the readings occurring, correct, right now? We're basically prepared to just go do the readings, electronic readings of the water things.
We went live last month.
Last month, we, we did a quiet live last month. But yes, this is, these meter reads are automatic and.
Okay, then I guess my request would be is that current setup is what it is, but we make sure, cause in the past we've had zero. Applied for additional gallons that we just, base rate for four thousand gallons and we charged three fifty and put this announcement in the, in the.
Well.
In the horse happenings as requested and also in the water bill, and then May one, we're gonna get the new rates. It's a one month notice.
The rates that we approved in October.
Rates that we approved in October, correct.
So they will be billed according to actual usage.
Correct, actual usage.
There are businesses, for example, in town that are using forty thousand gallons a month.
Yeah.
They will be billed for actual usage.
Correct.
Yeah.
The church is one of them, they're big water users, so they will be charged for actual usage.
Yeah.
So they are charged for actual usage based on the water meter.
Right.
So you're just saying implement the, cause we updated the resolution show today, so you're just saying follow the resolution. It was cleaned up.
May one, but the current bill that's gonna go out.
Yeah.
Stays as it, but you're doing your readings, so at least you're getting the usage.
Yeah. I would, I would do that as a motion.
Right, we're still gonna have to have that consultant to verify.
That's a future.
Well, that, that, well, that was my sec, I was just getting to that point, you know, do we need to approve a rate study or some. Somebody will do that for us, or what, how are we gonna do that rate study?
Well, the rate study, let me have more information, I'll get more information, I don't think you need to approve anything, so you can have press, information presented.
We do, we do need to do that.
If there is cost tied to it, there is a set of, if it's under ten thousand dollars, which I've got it, it's. Rate studies are typically well under that, if there is even a cost, I understand is the water one is free. But. If we had anything like that, maybe I could handle it, moving forward on that and then report back to council, so.
So you wanted another, you wanted to take a motion for the May one?
A motion that we use the current structure that's in place right now with all reads being completed. For the next April bill, one going out, and then we implement communication in horse happenings and in the water bill of the impending. Coming up changes and then May one, we implement the resolution that was approved back in October.
Second.
Okay, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, Brian, let's make that happen then. All right.
Bring it up with the, one where we, we have fourteen or we have fourteen.
So you have a.
We gotta add a couple, we got these add-ins now for the Lions alcohol.
Correct, right.
Yep, for the offsite license, what do you need to do for that Vance, just to basically make a motion and go with it?
Yep, that's all we do.
So this Friday, the Lions have their fund aid over at the senior center, they need an offsite license.
And we've always, no charge.
Yeah. I guess we've done that in the past.
Just a temporary liquor permit.
Yep, for what you do.
Temporary offsite liquor permit.
It's a one night event, especially.
They've already paid, they've already, Big Erbs has already paid for, is it Big Erbs or is it the Lions that paid? Is, is, are we issuing the license to the Lions group or Big Erbs? It's a temporary transfer of their license to an offsite.
Offsite location.
Cause they're only licensed to locate a block one, block four. Right, 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 yeah, okay.
So, you need a motion David, a motion Brian, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, yeah, you wanna let Kelly know then Vance?
Yeah, I'll do it tomorrow.
Yep, perfect, okay, good, then Black Mountain Software.
Um, I guess I, I have what, two items, right, one is this relation to the, um, uh, audit then. So Vance, we've requested documentation about how we were going to address the issues brought up by the audit. Um, have you made, been able to make any progress, or can we get a timeline on when those will be presented to us?
Yeah, I met with Paige today and, um. If, um, we're going to be address, addressing those specifically next month when they're out here for the audit. And the adjust, whatever, if there's adjustments that need to be made, which there probably will be, be done at that time.
What about, it seemed a lot of these audit findings were process driven, or how we account for certain things, how we enter certain transactions, related interests. And, and principle of those types of things. And now with the SRF bringing up that, uh, this audit is a much bigger concern, and it's critical that we get the details of how those will be addressed. So that we can make sure that we're able to provide funding, so.
I understand that. I think we're going down the right road.
Okay, I'd like to still see a detailed resolution then for each of those, how you're going, how you're addressing those, okay?
Okay, I did send that out.
We got the, that list, did you get the?
No, it went out.
It, we would need, we would have something for council though. So you sent Cory, then Cory and I.
Each of the items was addressed, material weaknesses, that's what you're referring to?
Yep. Did you send it to me? Yeah, that's it. Let me check. Okay, um, I guess second would be, I'd just like a quick update on the status of the Black Mountain implementation, where we're at, concerns, that type of thing. Or if something you can present at the next, within a week or something, or.
I'm reasonably comfortable, but not totally. I have not had a chance to go back and look at a lot of the, uh, I think Black Mountain has all the data that they need. To the best of my knowledge, but I'm not totally sure of that, I talked to Don about it today and, and, uh, we're both fairly comfortable that. We're okay on April one. However, if you tell me, uh, let's postpone it for two months. Till we get additional office staff, I'd probably agree with you.
I don't have, I mean, that's what I need, the information, is that, is that your recommendation, is that somebody else's recommendation? I guess I also wanna know, you know, there is a cut over period, so do you have a cut up date of when you're stopping entering transactions in Great Plains? Versus when you'll enter them new and deal with open ones, those types of things?
We do, it's the last day of March, which I believe is the twenty-ninth. At that point, as we speak, the books will shut down. Uh, the trial balance will be sent to Paige at written roll, she'll make final recommendations for it entries. And on April one, we'll be live.
So you have any type of document from Black Mountain on their cut over process or anything like that, have they provided anything like that to you? Of that, just what you stated with details on that? Have they provided anything like that?
Just phone conversations.
Okay, they don't have a, they don't have a detailed checklist or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, we, we've been all through that, oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Do you have a copy that you could send me of that, just to see what it is?
I think I do, I will look. I, I kinda took the backseat to this, uh, you know, Mateo kinda ran that show and provided all that information, so. I will see what's out there.
Okay, I guess if you do have any concerns, it needs to be brought forward, I guess as soon as you can.
Are you opposed to postponing it?
Yes and no, I'd really like to see us keep moving forward, we have this on the list, so, but if you have a very. Specific concern or anything that you can bring forward that can communicate why we should postpone this, I'd like to see it. Not just a feeling, I want details.
It's time constraints, I haven't, I'm back to a one man show now.
Okay.
What, that's not the answer you, look, I can tell by your.
No, it's not, I want, I want you to tell me, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we know it's been some time, we know what happened, we know what transpired, and I just wanna know what your, you know. Do you have a, have you reviewed this in detail and can state, yes, we can move forward, or no, these are the reasons why I can't move forward, so I need to.
It's more so we know where we're gonna go.
Doesn't have to be today, I mean, certainly, please think about it and, you know, within the next few days, if you can bring forward any concerns, let's talk about them, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, move on to fourteen?
Nope, that was it.
I'll move on to what your original fourteen was and.
Okay, um, under city mature updates, we have a couple of items and one is, or two are both, or two of them are. We get into discussions however, whatever level council would like to. Uh, the first one is more of an update within the agenda packet, attachment fourteen dash, or, uh, item fourteen, attachment one. Is, uh, is a summary, it's a work in progress, I wanna thank Lucas, their staff. Also they drafted this up to make sure we keep track of all the different timelines, we have a lot of different projects going on. Uh, these are, the first part you have is obviously the developments, let's you know the status. Uh, Maple Lakes at the next state council meeting, that would be, well, the rezone, we're ahead of schedule compared to what the sheet says there. Uh, Cub Creek, that's going to planning commission next week, Cub Creek is a new development over by the high school. Uh, West Fargo Edition, which we've been through all of that process and completed the developer's agreement already. Uh, Visto's third edition, that's going to planning commission next week, therefore the final plat. Uh, that is moving forward now, and then Lost River, we have a few items that are being addressed before it goes to final plat. Uh, working on a four oh eight permit, uh, how that will be perceived, or pursued. Uh, also working with the developer, if there's any way we can find a compromise where it could go for or not. But still get that four oh eight permit knocked out, uh, that is through the Army Corps, so we're in discussions there. Uh, the improvement districts, recognize these have just the number, and then just saying the type of improvement it is. We will be adding the names, that's something that we've been starting to do, clearly staff wise, you see, you'll see in staff reports or memos, it'll say seventy six and roundabout, and in parentheses it'll say the number, so we're starting to get to the point using the name and number uh, in the project, so apologize, it doesn't have that information right now, but gives you an idea of where they've been, when we have accomplished different steps, and if we haven't knocked them out yet, when to expect them, gives you a general idea of what's going to be happening for each one. Uh, it's basically our checklist to keep the ball moving, so we make sure that we've knocked out each component of it.
Jim?
Can I give you a rundown, just of the ones in there, what the status is of them? As of this morning, we have staff meeting, so.
Okay.
I didn't wanna give you updated information, so I have some now, so the first one is two thousand eighteen three, that's Terragardens. As you see, approved a change order number one, Terragardens is on hold until the weather, weather, frost comes out and they get their work. Two thousand nineteen one is Lakeview Drive and Seventy Ninth Avenue, we had a meeting today with casual water users, it's earlier this afternoon to go over the water layout and look through that, plans to have, the plan specifications done this weekend to the city for review next week for approval, the first meeting in April.
Okay.
So, uh, that one, if all goes well, would be bid at the end of, end of, uh, end of April with an award, first or second meeting in, in May, so.
Okay.
Two thousand nineteen two, Seventy Sixth Avenue and Roundabout, that project is out for bid, we have a pre-constructor, or not a pre-constructor, we have a pre-bid walkthrough tomorrow with interested contractors tomorrow morning, that one is opened on the twenty eighth for potential awards, the first meeting in April.
That due date is when for those?
The bids are opened on the twenty eighth of this month, March twenty eighth.
Oh, they open on the twenty eighth, okay. I was thinking it was already opens.
Publicized when it began, month then, right?
What's that?
When was it publicized then?
I was, first, first, first publication was last Monday, then the second publication was today. So, uh, that one, I looked through the bidders, the plan holders list, uh, early, later last week and we had five or six. Three of them were pretty big contractors, so the interest is out there, I've been feeling some phone calls, the county's been feeling some phone calls, and the office has been getting some phone calls, so the interest is there, I think the word's out that there's gonna be a little construction around here, so.
Yeah, just a little.
Capitalizing on that, uh, two thousand nineteen three, Store Sewer and Street, that's sixty third street and eighty first avenue. Uh, that one, the intent is to bid that at the same time as Lakeview Drive and Seventy Ninth, bid it in the same package, but have it be separate, it's a separate project, but it makes the most sense to do it at the same time as those other ones versus drive.
Get all reduced mobile services.
Well, that and confused, uh, shouldn't say confused, but contractors working together. It's such a small area that if we can bundle as much into one contractor.
It's probably gonna be about as cheap as we're gonna get it, if we do it separately, it's gonna be more expensive.
Right, and then the times get, the times get off and things kinda get to be a little bit fair shaped with that, so. Uh, two thousand nineteen four is a horseshoe bend sanitary sewer, that's been on the list here for some time, that was a proposed SRF project, and that is the horseshoe bend trailer park up north, there's a private lagoon up there that the owner would like to get rid of with municipal system, so that's something we will have to address.
Wasn't that also Riverside? Riverside and horseshoe bend.
Yeah, we're designing for that whole area.
That's, that's same project.
Yes, yep, yep, and as far as the extent of the Riverdale Riverside portion of it, Riverdale. The Riverdale portion of it is, it was still to be determined. But the lift station that was being put in for the trip mobile home park would be sized to handle that kind of thing, so. Yeah, those are, those are the ones on the list, I do have a copy of the latest and greatest planning and zoning map in the other room, it's a big one, so that has gone before planning and zoning, I think Matt will be today. It's already outdated, if you, to be perfectly honest, because of Maple Lakes getting approved earlier.
But, like, I would say still, when we have our next comprehensive plan meeting over at senior center, let's have that one over there so people can see all we refer to where the projects are, and the developments are, that are going on, so.
And then we'll have map books made up once it gets approved, so that it's not the big huge wall size, you'll be able to flip through it on eleven by seventeen, it'll be a little more user friendly, then we'll get the PDF to, we get the print.
Digital electronic.
Put it up on, put on the web, yeah, put it up there and update the one that we've got, so. Uh, the other thing that is happening is the right away acquisition on Seventy Sixth and eighty first, uh, Sixty Third is ongoing, Lucas, we've prepared the exhibits, Lucas has gotten his information to the, their property.
Real estate department.
Their real estate department, and tomorrow, we're gonna go start knocking on some doors and try to get some stuff in the lab, I know Brent's had some discussions with a couple, or at least one of the homeowners, the landlords along there, three of them. Three of them landlords along there, so hopefully we can knock that out here, quick.
That's, that's the easement to extend Seventy Sixth to Sixty Third.
There's the landscaping business has, uh, we need some right away there, cause they, when they platted Almonds.
It's a throughway.
So when they platted Almonds, they didn't, they excluded that parcel, and that one still had the thirty three feet of right away where, when it went into Almonds, it extended out further, so we need to square that up, and then when the school platted, they dedicated more right away to construct the roads, we still have to get the paces, which is on the west side of the school and the Cub Creek land along to construct the ditch and stuff on Seventy Sixth, so that is um, ongoing.
And my recommendation is that the city buys that land, not acquire an easement for it, it's gonna be for streets, so the property owner won't have any use for that anymore, and it's an easier sell if you're saying that, you know, if you actually sell his property, you're no longer responsible for taxes and specials on that.
Timing might dictate some of that, so Lucas and I will have to meet some discussions about how you, how do you.
Would love to do title work on it and then set a closing date rather than just give money for an easement.
Yeah.
But we've already started working on it, we have the purchase agreement all drafted in.
Landowners are amenable to the purchase instead of easement.
Right.
You're working that direct, I mean, they had said no.
That's, that's the way that we're pursuing is with a purchase on it, it's um, ideally it would be dedicated through plating, but this is a little bit ahead of some of that, and we were able to do that with the school and Almonds for that matter was through some dedication, there's just some, it's a real jagged right away line, right away line through that. We might have to get an easement in the beginning to construct it and then have the process of purchase go through, but it's just however we can keep it moving along at a reasonable rate, so. Alright, steal anyone's thunder.
So, um, this is really nice, this is helpful.
Yep.
And now my.
It's improving.
OCD is coming out and you got, it's like very repetitive things in terms of the dates you're doing it, so like I'm thinking spreadsheet crap, you know, boom, boom, boom across the top of all the.
This, this was drafted for me.
Yeah.
And you guys are all getting.
We're, we're piggybacking off of Stan's work, so.
Engineers come in, so put the items across the top and then just put the dates in and that'd be awesome, thank you.
This is just so I can keep track of what's going on.
I, I would definitely give Lucas credit for this one, their, their staff.
Thank you, Lucas.
Don't doubt. We, we can definitely clean it up for this, we can clean it up.
Yep.
Okay, so we're, we're all updated?
For, for that one.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is economic development incentives, this one can be geared more to discussion, uh, we wanna see where the council sits in regards to doing incentives for economic development purposes. Uh, we currently have one already for, not really economic development, it's for residential properties, and that's a pretty consistent one across the whole area of the metro, uh, which is a two year tax abatement for new construction based on, I believe it's a hundred fifty thousand dollar property valuation. So the first hundred fifty thousand dollars is waived for tax bait, or it's a tax bait. That's fairly consistent, I believe, throughout the Fargo metro for North Dakota side. An area that Horace hasn't really capitalized on before is using abatements for commercial or industrial or economic development tool. We really haven't pushed economic development before, this is really our first year doing so. Uh, I can tell you, both Fargo and West Fargo use that as one of their tools for economic development. Uh, what the council would be willing to do for abatements is typically a negotiable matter, so you may see ones where it's two years, five years, seven, ten, just depends on the situation and what council is comfortable with. There's also tax increment financing, or financing districts, or what's called TIF. Now, TIF districts are common for industrial or commercial. Basically areas that you would have the potential for another revenue source. In North Dakota, I've talked to John Shockley about this and Lucas could expand too, is uh, in North Dakota, you'd use a TIF district for property tax, but not towards like a sales tax. Uh, I have seen it before down Kansas where uh, entities have basically used a TIF district and they took from property tax and sales tax and basically made it to where the government entities didn't have any revenue stream off of those, that commercial or industrial.
But it depends on the kind of business that is.
It depends on what they're trying to do.
Right.
But in North Dakota, you can't tap into the sales tax angle, you're going to go with property tax. With a TIF district, it's bait, it acts a lot like an abatement, however, the property owner would pay and, basically pay their property taxes, but would go towards paying off the improvements of either that facility or road or whatever, for, but it's a commercial practice, so let's say they build a couple million dollar building and they do a five year TIF district tied to it, they would take the money from, that they would pay property tax to Horace and put it towards that building and help pay off the principal for that. TIF districts also can be expanded just like abatements, but TIF districts, the requestor or developer can request a TIF district to be applied for city, county, school district, all those different entities to waive the property taxes and get put towards that improvement. Uh, it's also opens up different avenues for funding, there's different funding avenues from the state uh, loan programs that if they have a TIF district, that developer is able to capitalize on those avenues to help make their projects happen. It's like a lower interest loan or I forgot, a flex, flex pace.
Flex pace.
Yeah, so they're, they're low interest loans and, and they're given out, or they're, they can be awarded by the, the Bank of North Dakota for riskier investments, to allow riskier investments in places that the market can support. Um, those involve some type of public acknowledgement that, that the public supports this project, and that's what a TIF district would do in the flex pace program.
Yeah.
Um, so there's really two ways to do it, one, it would be just where the sales portion of the property tax is applied into the TIF district. Um, you can see that across North Dakota in projects that need flex pace funding, or want to utilize flex pace funding. Um, and then there's a, a full TIF district, which would mean that the developer would have to go to all the entities that collect property tax and they all have to agree on the same level of base, same level of reinvestment.
Um, one more area, and I know Matt and I are looking into a little bit more. We have our, the sales tax that generate, you know, twenty five percent going towards economic development. And we're looking at different ways of what we could do for economic development, how can we use that, that funding, making like incentive programs, uh, that could be applied towards even residential, so improving quality of life, like uh, you know, facades, landscape. So we're looking at different angles, but one angle, which we're looking at, and I cannot tell you if it's possible yet or not, but we're looking at, so I wanna let you know is there's a program called jobs zones, the J O B Z zones. Uh, what that does is basically a funding program incentive, uh, if a business, commercial or industrial comes in, they create so many jobs, they get like an abatement. If they don't meet their quotas, they don't get the abatement. So that's another mechanism that could be used. We're looking into seeing if that is possible, but times those are in uh, more of like a rural workforce area, or area where they're struggling to get business, you know, industrial, lower income areas where they're trying to boost up the income of their overall population. But it doesn't mean per se that, can we mirror that type of program or not? So we're looking into the possibility of can we do that or not, uh, more just a localized scale or just what other ways can we get creative to do economic development incentives or economic development? That's the very first thing a, a business will ask. Ask you, if you're talking to a business owner and say, hey, come to Horace. Almost every single one of them will ask you, what are you guys doing? And I've been asked that multiple times already here, so we wanna get a pulse from the council, it's not official action, cause those come back to you anyways, if somebody wants an abatement, it's a formal request to see council for that type of function, but we wanna see where your thoughts are.
Well, the, the point of this is that, do we get a portfolio, so to speak, of options that are available to us, you know what I mean? And so is this necessarily like a guideline or policy that we would agree upon, that we would give to the economic development group that we're working on establishing, that they, that would establish that these are the rules, that you could have this menu, right, of options that are available to you, so really, I guess that, that's what you're saying is you're contracting that, similar to what West Fargo and Fargo have done, to set up those policies or guidelines, I don't know what that is, to say, okay, if, if a business comes to us, here are the things that are available to you as a business that the city would be willing to entertain.
Yeah, what we're looking at is more informal, but basically just saying, yeah, they're, they're interested.
But it's just a guideline, it's really more, nothing more than a guideline, but it's saying that we've had a discussion about each of these options, whether that would be acceptable or not. Right, so for example, a TIF district, I know that's another one, it's a hot topic, some people absolutely hate TIF districts, so, or, you know, residents, cities, whatever, so but if we decided, no, we are not gonna provide this TIF district, then that would not be on the option list, right? So, but it's basically coming with that list of what are the options available that we would be willing to entertain, and the business would come and say, okay, which, which would be most appropriate or appealing to, depending on the kind of business, because if you're looking at larger business, you know, they're, they're gonna look at different incentive options than a coffee shop coming in.
Well, I'll take, for example, and I'm not getting into the details of a whole lot, but there's one, for example, that they're asking about TIF district, they wanna come to Horace, and if we could work with them on TIF district and get the right terms there, and that's something we can propose to council, but if you guys are receptive to it, then we'll be able to come back and say, hey, this is the proposal. Day or nay, or do you wanna tweak, things like that, and we go back and forth a little bit, but um, there's some, they're saying, you know, some entities are going, hey, if you could do a TIF district, then we're interested, but if you're gonna say, nope, no TIF districts, some are gonna say, nope, we don't wanna, we don't wanna bring this, this activity to Horace, so.
I guess that, that's the request, is we have to get something that we can look at, to point to, to say, if we can get a policy or guideline, whatever it is, similar to what West Fargo's done, for example, that we can use as saying, alright, now we can go, agree to that proposal, right, because now we can enter the, the discussion with the business, knowing full well what each side is expecting.
And there's, I think it, it makes sense to, when we first look at implementing TIF district, or implementing some types of incentives, that it, it, to some degree remains situational, because that's how we continue to better learn what will work and what won't work. Um, a, a big stick with TIF, TIF districts is how long, does that district last, how long is that dividend or that, that difference reinvested? You know, and I've seen situations where it's been five years, and I've seen situations where it's been twenty five, and the answer.
That's gonna be a situational thing.
Those will start situational as, as we continue to learn what works and what doesn't work in the Horace market, so. But I also think it's the, it's the size of the, of the project, cause you know, again, we've stated that we're not taking away sales tax, which a, a building that's ten million dollars, that's a significant amount of sales tax revenue to us, and then ongoing, if there's other residents or, you know, if it's mixed use, all that type of stuff, additional sales tax, you know, you start, start doing a simple analysis and you you, you know, you're gaining a good portion of that money back over the period, and then at the end of the period, now you have a value, a huge value area, and we're able to get drawn more residents because we have a commercial and we also need that mixed tax base to continue to defray some of these special assessments and those types of things that are being concerned, it's cause we have a wider tax base than communities.
That's the point.
The sell up offer, like what you're saying, the variety of mandates. One example where I seen where it took sales tax and property tax down Wichita area, Kansas area, was where Cabell's store is. They had to interchange improvements, road improvements. They had to interchange improvements, road improvements, make it like a six or eight lane by principal road, um. And then they built this massive, you know, I say massive, but it's massive, but a series of commercial buildings in areas where. Cabello's was an anchor, and what it did is it spurred development even on the other side of the freeway. For a whole nother development to happen and it offered more amenities to the public that they wouldn't have had otherwise. So that was where, you know, Wichita, they had Cabello's come in, they said, Cabello's, we'll come here, but we need this and this. And that was their negotiation with them, but paid for those improvements, the sales tax money and those property tax went to pay for. Those improvements like the interchange, couple million dollars worth improvements, so it was a nice amenity for the area. But they gave up some.
It's just something we're gonna have to start, I think, I think what we're gonna wind up doing is we'll put together a portfolio of the things that. We as the council want to incentivize with, just have a variety of things, because again, we're gonna be in a situation, we're gonna have very unique. Situations come up here, we wanna make sure we have the flexibility to move somewhere or the other way.
Right, the, the maid with the business. The major investments that will help defray a lot of the costs that are currently being, but not all, not all of it, but will begin to lessen the impact of special assessments. A lot of those developments don't really come unless we have something in place, or they come much later and we don't get the.
Yeah, but I say, we should, we'll have to come up with a, a call to city portfolio of things that we can, we can incentivize.
As you stated, they're each situational, you're gonna, you're gonna review each one and.
In terms of when the business comes.
Yep, we wanna make sure that we've got enough cards in our deck that we can use them as we.
I think what you need to do is, you know, you have your monthly balance sheet, income and expense, and you get a quarterly balance sheet. Then you need to do a pro forma balance sheet and a projection of income and expense to compare what they wanna do. So you, the council people can see a trend of what's needed, how much cash, how much you generate, how much profit you have. And that's what you need to help make your guys' decisions.
Right.
And we'll have to come with that, and that's, that's gonna be part of that negotiation and conversation, but that's gonna happen.
I've only been a banker for forty-five years.
So, yeah.
The, the other thing I wanna add to is, and I mentioned in the Sackport is, we are working with a U two S. Our partners in marketing grant has a rebranding of the city and also.
See you guys.
Um, a rebranding of the city and also, um, helping us put together economic development committee. So we're putting this economic development committee together to help have a group to bounce these off of, to also help recruit businesses. Things like that, so.
So, let's move along here to the next one.
Yep.
Good policy update on that?
Um, basically what we're working on still, we talked about this at last council meeting, but a special assessment policy. That identifies what we would do above and beyond century code, um, starting to draft something up. And what I'm hearing the most common from West Fargo and seeing from, hearing from folks around the special assessment committee for Fargo. Is the common theme is the letter notifications, um, and that's what we've acknowledged that we're looking at doing.
Yep.
Uh, also looking at, are there ways to. Set the different ways special assessments would be reviewed, so West Fargo has their policy saying. This type of project, these are the different types of ways that we could assess it that makes sense, or here's, here's our options. So that's another thing that we could look at if council liked, and then the third one component is, uh. Identifying a commitment from the council of certain types of projects. Would we or would we not allow special assessments to occur for them? So like the SSL, council could say, uh, we're not. Our standard practice, so it's a policy or guidelines, not a ordinance, we're not proposing as an ordinance. But you could say our standard practice or guideline is to not do a special assessment for that type of improvement. It would be improvement, you know, that type of improvement like the SSL would be handled through the utility rate. So our sewer fund would have a rate that would be adequate enough to be able to handle. Capital improvements and where we could bond against, it's a lot cheaper for the city and everybody to bond against the utility. Than it is a general fund. So that's, that's one way, one item we could look at, now, it's not gonna be the say all cure for special assessments, but it could show. An effort from the council saying, hey, we don't plan on doing this, this is the practice that we're gonna follow, or if we were to have to do this. We're gonna make sure that we've exhausted our other options or utility.
So there's, but there's essentially two parts of that policy, one is the communication, and the other is the funding options that are available to that type of project, so. I mean, and, and we've talked about this and it's like, yeah, let's, let's get something drafted.
Yep, and we're looking on the draft.
So we, we need something drafted soon.
Yep.
So that we can say, okay, if we're gonna use sales tax revenue, if we're gonna use highway fund, whatever it is, depending on the project type, what are the funding options? You know, of which special assessment is one of the options, right, to, to, to fund this type of project, so we can give us that. Flexibility to be able to say what would be a special assessment or, okay, this is our forty percent sales tax. You know, sixty percent special, whatever percentage that works out to, but we, we need that policy draft.
Yep, and that's sort of just letting you know what areas we're looking at and if there's anything else. That says, yeah, you guys are going, yes, look at or put the brakes on, don't look at this other area for, so that's why I'm looking for feedback.
I guess the first would be, just as we've had significant communication back from our residences around the process. Do you relevant in the funding sources, so we can get that out there, we can get feedback on it, we can get that type of stuff and what the avenues we will use.
Communication process.
Well, just the whole process and there's specific steps that have to be done based on the century code. What are we doing just as they requested above and beyond to communicate whether that's the letter, whether it's communication this way, whether it's that, whatever those are.
Remember, Lucas put together a nice sheet for that one, to try and explain what that was.
Which was specific to the century code and all that, so now.
And I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's something that we have to talk to, we can elaborate a little bit more on it, but I mean, something like that, what is the process?
Right.
And go through that as to what, you know, if we follow what we've been doing, this is what the process was, now if we change that.
Right.
We're gonna augment it and add our own, we'll send out notifications.
Well, have we published that policy, that, that process we have today?
We haven't yet, no, because.
I think it needs to be reviewed and I think our new communications person should, should review it, it's maybe some explanations.
We, we get that done soon, that's great, because we're going into construction season, I mean, we're, we're in the middle of this right now, so we need to have this policy.
Well, that's something that I would revise to further explain it to the layperson rather than, I think right now.
Cause that's what I was saying, we, you got, you had to explain.
We need a policy and then we can translate that into something that we can indicate out to residents. But, I mean, we need both, but at a minimum, we need a policy start that we can say, point to and say, this is. The way we'll handle the communication and the process, now, we could track like that, so that's more human readable, instead of lawyer readable.
Think you might have gotten dissed.
Is there, is there a special assessment group? I mean, is there, you talked about it earlier, I know when you're, you're always having concerns earlier, is there a group that is called a special assessment group?
There is a special assessment committee.
Commission.
Commission, okay. Um, what they, what they do is they are the, they're the group that reviews. And creates a recommendation for the city council, how a project would be fairly assessed. So it's basically a checks and balances, somebody looking at the details saying, okay, yep, this makes sense, this is probably the fairest way. They view as, um.
To assess.
To assess properties for those improvements and they also review, does that property truly benefit or not? Um, it's a, it's a tough role to play on.
So they're not from here though?
No, they are, they're residents from Horace, and then like I said, what they do is they make the recommendation of how the project we've broken out. And funded by the different parties that benefit and then that will say. Yep.
So who are they, who are these people, and who, who picked them, I don't remember.
They're appointed, they're appointed by the mayor and council, um, they're appointed officials. Century code requires it to be a six-year term, they could, if they don't wanna do it, they could always step back, but it's a six-year term from appointment. And there's three of them, three individuals that are on that, and they meet as, as needed, it isn't like a set meeting or anything. It's just when there's a special assessment district that's brought forward, that is when they meet.
So are they, are they representative of the, um, the city as a whole, so it's like one taken from this section, one taken from this?
It's, it's three residents, uh, and they.
Do we get to know who they are?
Yeah, they're, um.
Steve Fisher.
Karen Brink, Marcia Kemmer and Steve Fisher.
Those are the three current.
Yep.
So that, I mean, based off that, it just seems a little odd that residents.
It's how it's done in every city in the state of North Dakota.
Really?
It's a century code, and so a century code is like the state law and it's outlined there specific saying three people.
I think, I think you need to, it's just, no, no, it's, it's.
They make recommendations.
The city brings forward a recommendation, so it's not just a whole bunch of information is laid on these people and they have to analyze and all this kinda stuff. We vetted it out and we say, these are the potential options that could be used in this situation. What do you three feel are the best, here's how it would break out, we've already defined the size.
Guided by our engineer, guided by the attorney.
It's sort of like, though, all those people are selected and you said there's six-year terms, etc.
Six-year terms is what century code requires, or says it is, does that sound?
I'm just curious how, I mean, I don't know any of these three people, but, um, I'm just curious how that, how you go about selecting somebody. You know, is it, is it that these people ask you or do you seek them out or is it just your friends or is it, you know what I mean? It's like, who are these people?
I see.
I guess my, my point is, I just wanna make sure that it's a, it's accurately reflecting the different parts of the city, so it's not like.
But that's subjective as well, I mean, and just because, I mean, they could be from opposite ends and we have somebody in the middle, but then one about the east.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, it's subjective, so you try and, if you're gonna select somebody, you want somebody who's gonna be objective and that's the whole point. If you're gonna talk to somebody about this, you want somebody who's objective and understand that you're affecting people with these assessments.
And believe it or not, it's not a very popular position.
Sounds like you're volunteering to be on this committee, so you guys, you might be nominated.
But I mean, that's the thing.
I'm just curious, I'm like, who, who, I just wanted to know, like, who, how do these people get selected on there, who are they, you know, it's like. And I just wanna make sure, I mean, that's usually the people who you ever have on a panel or anyone that you typically have on a council, they're representative. The different areas, you know, is that what I mean?
But we don't have that in, like, the three of us or the five of us that are on this council were just duly elected, so, and then appointed.
But we vote you in.
Correct, 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 that's, that's the side that, that's right, but we appoint and just.